If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone. We don't usually have a full house, so thanks for coming and filling up the room. All right, the first thing we need to do is to approve the meeting agenda.
I would motion approve the meeting agenda?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Five point zero is community comments. Community comments is an opportunity for the public to address a school word on a school-related item in accordance with the guidelines printed at the end of the agenda. The agendas can be found on the table over there. We've got a few people that have signed up, and the first one is Kathy Sullivan, VPC involvement. Hi.
Hi. Hi, I'm Kathy Sullivan. I live at 28 More Metal Road. I'm here because of a concern that I have. I'm a volunteer advocate for VPC, and it came to my attention that the school is no longer involved with VPC. VPC is a violence prevention organization, and one of our preventions is to work with the youth in the school and to use a curriculum to teach them how to respect themselves, how to respect other people, what to do if they're in trouble, if something happens, either a physical assault or a sexual assault. And it's valuable information for them. VPC has been doing it for 10 years. It was ended last year, and it's not been picked up again this year. And I'm really concerned about that. I'm concerned about our kids. I'm concerned about the lack of the school is not using something that is free in the community and something that is available from professional people that are trained in how to help youth handle difficult situations. That's mostly what I'm here for. These are some questions that we came up with. Safe Dates was a class that was taught in ninth grade health class. It's no longer being taught. We don't know why. Something else maybe is being offered in its place. If it is, is that person trained in sexual and relationship violence education and intervention? Shouldn't maybe the VPC be involved with this? You know, they make connections with the teachers that teach that. And if they do have a situation, then they're not so afraid to go to those people and discuss their problems with them, you know? If they don't have that connection, if it's some office, some place in town, they're not so likely to go and ask for help. And that's what we want to do. We want to help. We also had program for middle schoolers. That's not happening. We wondered what's happening in the elementary schools. There's a safe and sound program that we were trained in. I don't know if that's being offered to the elementary school. And it all has to do with keeping them safe. There's another question about, I know that Title IX requires the school to have a person designated as the violence the person that you would contact if there was some sort of violence, and we know that there is a person. That person is a male, and we're wondering if maybe there should be a female also. So maybe there should be, you know, both sexes. We're also wondering, and hopefully if you do have someone else, that those two people would go through some kind of specialized training that's not required by the state, but we think it, I think it's a good idea for them to go through the training, some of the training maybe that we've had as advocates, so that you really know how to respond to anybody that's having a problem of sexual assault or physical assault. It's kind of complicated, and you can't gloss over it. I think the training is really important. And I want you to know that I'm concerned enough that I snowshoed out of my driveway and begged a ride down here tonight. That's how much I care. And these kids are important. It's important for the community. It's important for them. It's important for us to have students, have youth that are growing up to be healthy and respectful and safe citizens. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll have Dr. Crandall follow up with the questions. Dr. Crandall will be following up if you answer those questions.
Okay.
Okay? We also have Chad Venish, CCEA, CCEA contract.
Hello. On behalf of CCEA President, Julie Bishop and our members, we want to acknowledge the efforts of members Rogers and Shirley and Dr. Crandall in working hard for this settlement. We want to thank them and the entire board for their continued support. A contract we can both be proud of helps the Cook County students and families that you serve. Thank you.
Okay, six point zero is student highlights.
Well, actually, before we go on, it's worth noting that a lot of thanks goes to Chad for all his hard work, for being extremely organized in that process, which was helpful to everybody. So he definitely earned his keep on that one. So thanks, Chad, for that.
Thanks, Chad. Student highlights? I don't have anything written down, so.
We don't have students here, however. We were going, I was going to give a shout out to two of our coaches. Brian Miller does our junior high Knowledge Bowl. David Lickte has been doing our JV Knowledge Bowl. They have been taking groups to compete Wednesdays. I joined the weekly lineup behind the school at 6:00 a.m., so we drop our kids off, they get on the minibus, they go over to Mountain Iron. They compete in Knowledge Bowl. We had our last JV meet yesterday. The kids, the one group took, I think, third place, and the other group took eighth. But the junior high had great participation numbers under Brian. We didn't have that before. Brian kind of brought that in at the younger level, and David did a great job with JV, and now we'll kind of move into the varsity season. And I believe David Lickte and April Wallstrom will double team that again. So a shout out to those kids, and then a special shout out to Alyssa Spry, who is our senior, is a senior student athlete at Cook County Schools. She just recently competed in the All-Star, the Poli League All-Star volleyball game, so we wanted to give a shout out to Alyssa.
Great, thank you. All right, seven point zero is the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda somebody would like pull for further discussion? If not, any other motion to accrue?
I'm going to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, eight point zero are discussion action items. Eight point one, how do you say the name?
Bergen KDV.
Okay, it's all written together.
I know.
I'm like, Dustin? I'm like, no, Bergen Dibb. Audit presentation.
Dustin, Dustin.
Dustin, hi.
I know, there's a lot of syllables. We've been trying to work.
Okay.
Pronounce this a lot of syllables.
Okay.
So, hi, I'm here for the audit presentation. I appreciate the opportunity to be. Laurie's going to help me out and run the PowerPoint. So you have four documents along with a copy of this PowerPoint presentation. It's going to be the financial statements and communication letter for both the district and the separate student act and the audit. So this presentation is basically the financial analysis piece. It's pretty high level. Yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me or wait till the end, and we can catch them up. So, the, can the district pay us as far as to issue an independent audit report? It's for us to give an opinion on the financial statements of the district. And the financial statements are the district's responsibility, and it's our responsibility to audit them. And so we give a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion. It's the best we're allowed to offer, saying that everything is materially correct, that there are no major errors, no major noncompliance, that sort of thing. We did have two findings. The first finding is the lack of segregation of accounting duties, which most school districts in the state of Minnesota receive, especially ones of this size, because of your small district staff and the fact that they wear so many hats and do so many different things, that there's not really a way to segregate everything properly. And then we did have another deficiency for the fixed asset policy, and it was just getting that more cleaned up. There's not a, usually we like to see a capitalization threshold, basically the board saying, you know, every item over whatever dollar amount should be capitalized and tracked and that sort of thing, as well as the useful lives of assets and the depreciation method. So we are required, the Office of the State Auditor puts out a checklist for legal compliance, and we're required to go through this checklist and make sure that you're in compliance with various regulations and statutes. And we did not have any findings related to that, so good news there.
Yay, Lori.
Okay, the communication letter, which is the second thickest bullet, or document, these are kind of the different pieces to it. So there's the required communication, basically saying our responsibility as auditors and your responsibility is management. And then financial analysis, which is the bulk of the rest of this presentation. And then at the end, we have legislative updates, basically the things going through the state legislature that will affect school districts. And then we have emerging issues, which are the new government auditing standards or statements that'll be coming down the pipeline in the next couple of years. And then we do have the audit of the student activities, which is separate. And this is the last year it'll be separate because Whitlam and the new GASP is they're all being brought under board control. So you will be seeing dispersment information for activities that you probably haven't before, so just wanted to make you aware of that. So this is a schedule of the general education aid, so for the last 10 years. So as you can see, it's, you've gotten a 2% per pupil unit increase for the last couple of years. The reason we want to point this out is this drives a very big part of the revenue for the district, and so it's very important. And it kind of shows how important student counts are, because for each student you get, for 2019 it was $6,312. So how does that affect the district? So this is a schedule of the last five years for ADMs. So these are resident student counts within the district. So from 2018 to 2019, student counts decreased 12 units. But over the last five years, it's actually increased 45 units. So fairly stable enrollment with a slight increase. So this is where it gets kind of confusing, because we take those numbers and we apply these weighting formulas to them. So for every student, you get one pupil unit, and for secondary students, you get 1.2 units. And so that brings us down to the pupil units, which is what the aid actually gets paid on. So in 2019, pupil units decreased 16, which corresponds to the ADM decrease. But over the last five years, they've increased 17 units. So stable enrollment again. This is a snapshot of the budget to actual comparison for the general fund. So in the final budget that the district asked, it was anticipated that fund balance would increase about $591,000, which you can see down here. So revenues actually exceeded expenditures by 1.3 million. And so what caused that is revenue was significantly over budget, and there were a couple of things in that. $194,025 centact and billed money was received that wasn't anticipated, because that money just kind of comes in, and there's no budgeting for it. You kind of get it when you get it. And then another piece was $131,000 in impact aid, which is the exact same thing. The district kind of receives it as it receives it. It's not really something you can budget for. The expenditure budget was $70,000 under budget, which is a 1% variance, which is very, very close. And that's really the big part that you can control. So that's awesome to see. This is just kind of a breakout of the general fund sources of revenue between state, local property taxes and other revenues. There's nothing really that I don't want to talk through on here, but it is included for you guys to look through. So this is the general fund expenditure by program. So as you can see, the biggest chunk is instruction, 65%, so that's your regular instruction, your instructional support, and your special education. And the Department of Ed sets that benchmark to shoot for around 65%, so you're, so the district is right there. And it's very consistent with last year, which you'll see on the next slide. Last year, the percentage was 64%, and the rest of the program expenditures were very consistent too.
This is last year.
Yep. So this is kind of a snapshot of the general fund for the last five years. So as you can see, fund balance went up 1.7 million, and so that, a lot of that had to do with the overage in revenues. So revenues increased about 5%, expenses decreased by about 0.1%. So that's what's driving the big increase in fund balance. I wanted to talk about restricted fund balance quick, so as you can see, that went up about $200,000. And that's various restrictions that the state imposes, so it's not necessarily available to use for anything. They have specific buckets that they require the district to put money in. So that's what that is. And then this assignment of fund balance increased quite a bit this year, and the district has decided to put, I think it's $300,000 away for future bus purchases, just to, so that when those things come up, that it's not a surprise that there's a pot of money sitting there for those.
Because we had control over the sign.
Yep.
We did not have control over the registration.
That is correct. Yep. Yep. And then as you can, there's a nice increase in on-site fund balance too, which is kind of your rainy day fund, just in case something were to come up, where if you want to start your programs, it's like that. So this is fund balance as a percentage of operating expenditures. So as you can see, this year, it's significantly higher than it was last year. It's at 45%. And the state average, however, is right around 2021%, which is the LUBAR. The reason for that is the same reason fund balance increased so much was the unanticipated revenues that came in. So the last couple of slides are your special revenue funds. So this is your food service fund. So revenues were down due to the decrease in students. Expenditures were up due to some capital equipment that was purchased. But even with revenues going down and expenditures going up, fund food service still had a positive overall operations. And for the last five years, it's been positive, so that's awesome to see. So community service revenues and expenditures were down. Again, the big number here is the revenues versus expenditures. It was still positive, and it's been positive for the last four years. So it lets you know that you're charging enough for your community and programs. That was all, yeah, that was all I got. So it was a lot. What do you have to add?
Do I have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
On the restricted fund balance?
Yep.
What are the items?
I.
Specifically?
So we have some capital in there. We've got some, is that food service too? No.
Oh, LTFM.
LTFM.
Term facility maintenance.
So if you go to page 47 in the Facebook, it breaks out. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the finance, yeah, page 47, it breaks out the different restrictions. So a lot of it's operating capital, and a lot of it, and the other half is basically long-term facility maintenance. So those are different buckets you can use for those specified things.
On the ADMs, the, so we've got the, I don't know, the membership, then you have the liability multiple.
Yep.
Then you're subtracting out residents going elsewhere from that. So I guess, I guess I didn't quite understand what that was, and how do you get the ADM number?
So the ADM comes from the Department of Ed. They take the Mars data from the district and you have to generate the reports and put those on MDE.
Okay.
And then if you understand the residents going elsewhere, that's your open enrollment loss.
Going for like charter schools.
Right, yeah, charter schools or other districts.
Home school, charter school, online.
So the 664 is like the total, like maximum number, could be based on like residents in the county?
Yep.
Is that what that means?
Okay.
Got it. Thanks.
And you see the pre-kindergartens in there as well?
BPK.
So with our BPK, those kids are part of the generating.
But not preschool, but just BPK. So the four-year-old preschoolers are generating revenue.
So for the fixed asset policy, do you have a best practice that you're going to recommend, or this is up to Laurie and Dr. Crandall to?
Yeah, me and Laurie have talked through it a little bit, and we've, yeah.
So we have a policy, but there's certain things within that policy that we didn't fill in the blank.
Defined, we didn't define.
Or defined. So I was going to talk to Jeff at ARC and say, what do most of the districts in our region use for their threshold and their depreciation style type of method?
Sure.
And then come back with the policy and say, are there certain revisions we would like to make?
Okay.
Yeah, so that'll be part of our policy review.
I mean, since we're not paying taxes, I think about this at my business, how my depreciation schedule is impacting things.
Yep.
Different here. I mean, what's sort of like, could you just give us like a brief overview of like what the, how that's going to affect our financial statements? You know, depending on how things are depreciated, et cetera?
The impact on the district isn't, on district operations isn't huge, but we are required to disclose the amount of capital assets the district had, has and the amount of depreciation. So it'll be making sure that, and we are required to disclose the policy as well. So it'll help more for financial reporting, but as far as the actual impact on the district is probably pretty minimal.
Sure. And you guys are going to run the, you guys are going to manage it, or somebody's going to manage the depreciation schedules, or that's something that we will do in-house?
I do, with ARC's help.
Yeah.
When I, when I pay for something and purchase something, it goes into our smart finance database. And then we pull those out and look at all, we look at all the expenditures for the year and say, is this something that should have been a capital depreciation schedule? And then Jeff and I go through that as we're preparing for the audit. And he runs those depreciation schedules based on whether it's a vehicle, or whether it's equipment or something like that.
For a new roof.
Yep, stuff like that gets pulled in.
Is this, is there a threshold that is mandated by law, like what the?
Nope. No, I mean.
Could be 500 bucks, or it could be 10,000, or 100,000.
We've been using 2,500, but it's not in our policy.
Right, so yeah, it could be something as simple as just putting 2,500 in policy, or.
Just more work and more things that.
In the lower.
Right. Yep.
Right.
Yep.
That's why I was going to ask what other districts do. Yeah.
Okay.
I just was going to, in the communications letter, you laid out the lack of segregation of accounting duties, and you, you know, you really laid out exactly, you know, because it's hard because we're small. And I, and I know, I know we're small, but I would say we do, I think we should look at those and just make sure that we're aware and acknowledge that, and also maybe potentially look for a way where we can add some sort of a double check in there.
So some of it we do, the annual double checks are bills that we pay.
Yes.
The check stock that he mentions, the check stock is blank, so it's not like I can steal a check and print and handwrite it. The check stocks are all blank. There's no signatures on them or anything. So there's, there are some things that are, we have in place, so.
The bank now sends me, sends me notification.
When I transfer money?
She transfers money, I get an email.
Okay.
So I'm aware of it. And then I also sign off on all.
Whenever I transfer money, I give it to him, and he signs off on it, and I tell him what it's for.
Okay.
And then I sign off on all the bills as well.
Okay, perfect. Just, just to make sure that we're doing our diligence.
Student activity now being run through the district. I mean, it's a huge step. I think.
Pam's going to be involved on that.
Because it's not just.
It's accountability.
It's not, it's accountability.
Yeah, it's not two separate things.
Right.
So is some of that like donations to the school or to the student activity fund?
Did be prior, yeah. Now, now everything is going through, well, everything will be, you'll see everything on your.
So all the student activity checks, all the student activity deposits come in through Pam and me together, and then when I record them in Smart Finance, you'll see that Fund 11 start getting populated now on all of our reports.
Okay, so we get donations of band initiatives, or different things like that.
Yep.
Is that part of the reports we'll be getting?
You already do, yeah.
You get, any donation you get back, because the board has.
Well, we.
But if you get a donation, say somebody donates $500 to the Knowledge Bowl, Help for Transportation, that would come in, that would go through, into Fund 11.
So.
But it would be designated for that purpose.
A perfect example is Mickel's been fundraising for the band to go to a spring trip to Chicago. And Mickel's been, they've been selling coffee and other stuff and doing stuff. That money used to just go to Pam, and she put it in a separate bank account and recorded in QuickBooks. Now that separate bank account is going to be the district bank account. And so when I write a check for Mickel, it's coming out of the district bank account. So those checks now will be recorded in our Smart Finance.
Yeah, so it'll have its own distinct code.
Yep.
For Mickels, it will have a own distinct code for the basketball team.
We created like 27 codes for all the student activities. Yeah, I was, that was fun.
Any more questions for Dustin?
Just, just another question, just so you know, when Dustin's team came up, it was a new team coming in, so it was a little bit more extensive as far as the process, because didn't have all the.
He didn't have all the management processes.
So they had a little bit more work than what we've had, because we had Whitley for never years. So they put a little bit more time in and probably a lot more, well, I know a lot more questions were. Laurie and I know Pam was involved.
I was like, oh my gosh, I got five more emails.
He was very popular.
A little bit smoother as the relationship.
I appreciate you guys hanging with me.
Great, well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, great.
Do we need to have a motion? Do we have to accept?
I think it's, we have to have a motion or anything?
I don't have a motion. I'm wanting to.
They have to accept this.
Do we have to, we need to have a motion. Okay. So if somebody would like to make.
I move to accept the audit report from Bergen KDV.
Second. Okay, any other discussion?
I really liked it, by the way. I don't know, maybe I'm getting the hang of this, but compared with the reports we've gotten in the past, I was actually tracking this when I read through it the other day. It was like, oh, okay, I get this. So.
I agree. I agree. It was, the reports were well-written, so they're easy to interpret, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. You got that, Pam, right?
Yep.
Okay, great, thanks. Eight point two is goals report.
Uh, so on our goals, uh, still working on, uh, after our meeting, still, and that, need to get together with the administrative team to get some more specific. It's on goal number two and then Lori and I will connect with goal number three and also goal number one, work with the folks who are working in our diversity team along with the administration. So get some more specific outcome objectives for our goals. Uh, but on goal one, our, we do have a diversity committee and they are continually working on that. They are meeting where she, she's in here somewhere, or she is, are you meeting weekly, pretty?
Bi-weekly.
Yeah, bi-weekly. Um, and then also the, those informed secondaries looking at a little bit different model. And they'll bring that forward for the board so you know what's going on there. Uh, as far as increasing academic achievement, we did just, uh, hold a listening session held in Grant Portage. And that is for the parents of Grant Portage students who share concerns with the board. It's related in that respect. And then Cook County Schools managing our resources. Lori is, or is actually tomorrow is your levy, you're going tomorrow. We'll be at ARC for the workshop on the levy. Obviously, we have our audit presentation and we have truth and taxation scheduled for December twelfth. And you saw a preview of that at the workshop prior to the.
All right, any questions on goals report? Great.
Bond spending update, not, uh, much took place. Uh, the last pieces, looking at the front page there, we're back in October. We did have some, uh, payments paid out under our deferred maintenance. Cook County Home Center and Alco Service Honing. Still have some funds remaining and those are the only payments that went out in November.
So do we have money left in security and technology? Is there a plan for that?
Uh, we have to get together. I did, we just wanted to make sure and I think at this point we are at that point where we have all of our contracted items are now complete. And so we need to now, when I say we, Ms. Lori, myself, administrative team, go back to, uh, our list of items that have been put together early on. And now we're gonna start taking a look at those, review those, some of which are in this area of security. Make sure that we have the cameras where we want our cameras. Actually, I believe, now I have to verify that, but I think our server for the system is part of our upgrade already.
Was it our upgrade? Mr. Nelson mentioned that you might be upgrading switches, some of your Cisco switches or something.
Yeah, Ms. Lori mentioned that to us. It very well could. Um, and the others, we do have flexibility. We, we put those into categories right from the onset. That when Ryan and Urs Palmer put it all together, kept, kept just long sums because we really didn't know what the fallout, complete fallout was gonna be as far as some of the costs. So we do have flexibility to move those around. So if we find any, say we wanna, you know, we look at our, the technology needs. And was, you know, we should really put some funds in to replace some of our outdated either iPads or Chromebooks. And so we put some funds in, or like you were talking about security. Could be that some of our, it could be backbone, it could be some of our cameras are, it looks like we have a camera there, but it's not hooked up or it's not working.
Sure.
Or go from analog to digital.
Yeah, it's getting to the end, so obviously it's time to prioritize and get the most important things checked off and then.
And that's one of the other reasons, our, our fund balance has been going up just because we.
Because we haven't had to spend any money.
We haven't had to spend. Majority of the time we use, if we can, use our Fund Six, which is the bond. We've been using Fund Six.
Yeah.
So we've been saying ways, so we will have funds. So if a roof issue comes up in the future, something for deferred maintenance, we'll have funds for it.
Okay, anything else on bonds? Okay, eight point four is to approve the expenditure revenue report, October twenty nineteen.
And that's there for, hopefully you've had time to take a look at that. Any highlights on that, pretty standard?
Pretty standard. Yes. Starting to kick in with salaries and future salaries and stuff, so start seeing those categories go.
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve it?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'm moving this along.
Good, good job.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Eight point five to approve the Minnesota High School League Resolution.
And this resolution I shared with the board earlier, it's, uh, offering grants for, and funding to assist school district and recognizing, promoting and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in natural and confined arts. So it's funding that we can get through Minnesota State University.
This is a document you should get every year as a board. Um, every school should apply for this. Lots of, uh, lots of schools like this one are the radar, but every school should apply for this. What they do is they take your, your pupil unit, give you a reimbursement to put back into your athletic funding. And that helps offset, um, activity fees for kids. So we offer a lot of scholarships, certain kids can't pay or whatever that is. Um, this is a way that the High School League gives back to schools.
Have we applied for this before?
We have been sporadic about this in our past and it'll become a yearly thing for you to, to approve each year at this time.
Okay. I'm making a motion to approve Minnesota High School League Resolution. I'll second it.
So a resolution, we need to call on us? Not on this?
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Eight point six to discuss the T twenty-one resolution, uh, resolution supporting a minimum legal sales age of twenty-one for tobacco products.
I got this out to you a couple of weeks ago for everybody to review. And in the end, it's a lot of data there from American Lung Association regarding what economic effects, health effects and whatnot in there. And in the end, it's being resolved, Cook County School District encourages the Cook County Board to change the minimum legal sales age of twenty-one to twenty-one to purchase tobacco products.
So the public hearing for this is next Tuesday, November thirty-sixth, nine thirty. So people can come and speak to it, I know, which is.
Mr. Dorby.
Um, so that's what, this would be in support of that. Thank you for, Jeff.
Yes, it's, uh, obviously we've had, it, it was Mr. Dorby a little bit before our earlier meeting and that was one of the items for, I can't remember the number, but it was upwards of half a dozen kids. They've been vaping, you know, and that's just in one case, you know, throughout the time. And as you hear nationally, these people are dying from it as well, so.
Well, I make a motion to approve the minute. To su- uh, support the T twenty-one resolution supporting a minimum legal age, legal sales age of twenty-one for tobacco products. I'll second it.
Okay, and discussion?
So I think that this, I think it's a great idea. There's a lot of momentum around this. There's a lot of jurisdictions doing it. Um, so I think that's great. I think that maybe it would be even better if we could sort of seize on that momentum and do some, to support the effort. Because this is sort of something that we're, somebody else is doing, so to speak. But what can we do, you know, at our school, um, to, to do a better job at, at preventing these problems that have been outlawed? Um, and I think it's a good opportunity to, with all the momentum and enthusiasm for something like this, for us to kind of take a look at it and say, you know, what, what is within our control here at the school? And how can we do a better job to, to prevent these issues and?
Our world's education, we did have, was that back in October that you had the panel?
September.
Or September? Um, and that might be something that we could talk to our health instructor and see if we can get something from American Lung Association and, uh.
And I know we're working with Portage as well to have some of their, um, experts up there.
Yes, actually they, yeah, they have mentioned that they were gonna be bringing some of the.
So one of the issues, right, if I'm right, is that City of Grand Marais, it excludes this res- or this, this ordinance excludes the City of Grand Marais. Because county doesn't have jurisdiction within that. So the city has not done this yet and since we're in the city, that certainly has an impact. So, um, I think one of the things we can all do is encourage the city to also pass ordinance like this. Because that's where it's really gonna have the impact.
Well, considering that's where we are and that's where our school is.
Right.
I mean, it's hard. And so, I mean, I, you know, I wish they were, um, gonna be doing this hand in hand. Because as we, we all received a letter from the chamber. And so, um, I do think, you know, and obviously, you know, we don't want anybody, you know, smoking, vaping, whatever. It is, it is gonna make it challenging because it will not fly in the city and for the foreseeable future, since they haven't even started discussions as far as I'm aware. And so, um, although I, you know, I think doing a resolution is a good idea, I, you know.
Well, hopefully it pushes the city along to see that people in the community think it's really important.
Yeah. So we're not, there's not gonna, there'll be no impact for that county ordinance in the city right now, so.
However, the school is making a statement.
Yeah.
This is what we value. We value our children and we're ready now and everyone that also values our citizenry ought to get on it.
Yep, yep.
Yeah. And to education, way back when, perhaps you remember, it was, um, uh, Patton, um. Mark Patton had, he was a weightlifter, remember? And they came up and did a, this was anti-drinking, anti-alcohol. And was this in the same, um, uh, assembly where they had a person speaking who had been, had no short-term memory anymore because of drinking and driving and having an accident? And I thought that was really, I remember that. I mean, it was a really powerful thing. Here's a guy who is quite young, who couldn't do anything anymore because he couldn't remember. I mean, somebody had to make certain he could get out the door to go home, you know, from alcohol. So are, do we have tragically victims of vaping around here that could come and speak to the fact that my brain is now fried and I can't talk to you? Or, I mean, some sort of first person, something like that.
There's actually just what that does, there's, I think I can see what there are for speakers.
There are lots of programs and, you know, to be quite frank, we have to get a group together, even include our, you know, our students. And we have to have a real solid brainstorming thing moving forward because it's daily. And it's, you know, we don't like to talk about those kind of things, right? Because we like to talk about all the positives. Um, but it's daily and it's brought in daily and it's dealt daily. And, um, it's a huge time and energy sucker from people and even from kids who just, they're sick of being around it. And, you know, we're gonna stay diligent as we can on it. And, um, teachers are more and more savvy every day with, with usage and how we move kids and transport kids in the building and how long we have and those measures. But we do, we gotta come up with an approach and I think this, this ordinance is, SIS is kind of nailing it, that the city doesn't have anything going, but at least it's a good first step. It, it is a step where we're saying, this is where we wanna go and I'm hoping that, you know, will just keep the momentum going.
And with the education piece, it comes with empowering kids that aren't doing it to feel like they are the leaders and they are the norm and that they have to stand up for the right thing. And so that's something that I think we can continue to empower our teachers and empower our students, empowering our kids that are still here to just say, that's not cool. That's not something we should be doing here. And, you know, report it. That's a big thing. If we don't know that it's going on, we can't address it. And so when somebody does come forward, we have to make a statement that we believe them and that we are going to do something about it and not just sit on our hands, so.
Sure. I mean, I'm not one to advocate to be overly punitive for sure, I think. But that's a, that's a piece of the puzzle, you know, it's a tobacco-free campus. Like, you know, if somebody, if, I mean, okay, drinking is twenty-one. I'm sure there's still students that drink, hopefully they're not drinking at school. But, you know, it's happening. Let's all be, you know. So it's gonna, there's, there's a mechanism for it to happen even if people are twenty-one. So I think we gotta be, you know, take it that serious because I think if people were like drinking in school as much as they're doing this stuff, we'd probably be, it would be, you know, it would just, you know, rise to a different level. You know, there's just a different competition around that. So I think that's just something to keep in mind, like, are we doing enough to make sure that, like, yeah, like, again, I don't, I hate to be overly punitive. But at the same time, it's like, if it's not okay, like, we gotta make sure that it's not okay.
Well, with, like huffing, I mean, it's with an aerosol can. I mean, I recall a student who was thought to be huffing on, on campus. And it wasn't just the school that dealt with it. Um, the North Shore Collaborative was called in to talk to the parent and the student. And so what happens when we have middle school kids or whatever age kids that are vaping is social services? I mean, it must go beyond the boundaries of this school, does it not, or doesn't it?
Um, I would say in a general policy fashion.
It doesn't necessarily because we involve parents and guardians and it goes to them. It doesn't necessarily go beyond that depending upon circumstance and the situation. We have anything from a fifth grade student who's just tried it to somebody who has a bottle of it and is refilling it for people, right? Those are two different things handled two different ways. Uh, but generally, uh, the first point of contact is to get parents and guardians involved in that situation. And then come alongside them and help them steer where they want it to go. I mean, we follow our policy, obviously, um, but we also really try to work with parents on, I mean, I've had all reactions from, you shouldn't do anything. To get my kid down here, get their bag out, let's go through it, let's do it. I mean, we got the whole spectrum, right? And so we really try to come alongside, get the parents involved immediately. Um, but no, um, places like social service, stuff like that, no, that's not necessarily called in. It's not in our policy. Other schools have a policy where you, you enter a diversion program or maybe a ticket or something like that. And, um, as we move forward, we're gonna have to, to look at as a district what we wanna see.
Um, we have the technology around here and I saw this on TV one time. Uh, you know, whenever we won the tobacco suit, Minnesota did against fake tobacco and there was all this grant money for, for, uh, anti-smoking, anti-tobacco use program that we could develop. Well, somewhere in the last, I don't know, six months, I saw this, what I thought was a pretty slick commercial created by kids. It was some nonprofit, but it was again, it was about, um, was it about, it was about alcohol use. I mean, it was about alcohol and drugs. And so we have technology around here and surely we must have, uh, talented educators here that could help students create some sort of a viable commercial.
I'm sure the kids are savvy on their cell phones and video. I would, I would bet money on that.
Let's go far with them. Let's, let's shoot for, let's have something that we could put out there and say, this is school district, here, show this to your kids or something. And this is a, uh, public service announcement and let's have Cook County students do it. What do you think? You can talk.
I'm gonna throw that toward her administrators. Okay, um, any other discussion?
They do, they do.
Tell Dan what a TV is.
It'd be a pop-up app on the internet. Gotta get rid of it.
Instagram.
Snapchat. Um, any other discussion? Okay, so we have the motion on the table. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Uh, the resolution passes. Eight point seven is to approve winter coaches.
So that was sent out to you, so you have the, this the coaches that Mr. Doris, the activities director is, uh, asking for approval. These sports have started.
I will make a motion to approve winter coaches.
Second that.
Any discussion?
Maybe it's thanks to these people for being willing to, to work with our students.
Some of them are out in the elements.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Nine point zero personnel, uh, nine point one to approve the resignation of school board, school registered nurse, Allison Herring.
Make the motion to approve the resignation.
Second it.
And there's a
There's a letter.
Letter in there. It's great to have her back, and for the time, and due to her circumstances, she is unable to stay, but she was great as far as helping us find a solution that we found now.
She's been an awesome
Very free with her time to help us throughout the time that she's been with us.
She's been an awesome asset to the school.
Very good.
One of those things with her grant.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Nine point two to approve the hire of school registered nurse, Shelley Norman.
Shelley was working for us as a career professional opening out, but she's an RN, and so we approached her as one of the options, and she said yes.
Make the motion to hire. Ms. Norman, the registered nurse.
So I did have a couple of questions. I sent you in an email, and I don't, maybe you didn't get that email. I just have a couple. Or I didn't check my email on first sent it. So she will be working thirty-two days for the remainder of the
Oh, all right, so the model that she's doing, Allison's role, sort of former, had a role, we have a, we hired an LPN.
Right.
Okay, so we have someone in our office throughout every day, all day, when the kids are here. So we have some there. And LPN needs to be supervised by an RN. RN then goes through all the medical health plans, medicines, and provides direction to the LPN, training required and such. And so that's where she's filling that role, and so she only needs really one day a week. We actually built in more than one day a week, because at the end of the, actually, at the beginning, she worked a couple of days transitioning with Ms. Herron. And then at the end of the year, she has to do some final, kind of wrap-up reports. And so that's why it's a thirty-two day.
So it's one day a week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so
But with, like I said, with four days built in, typically yours is thirty-eight weeks.
Right. Well, I'm just, I'm questioning the paid leave, because the paid leave is a flat rate of one point two five days per month. So for four days in a month, you're going to earn a day off? That seems not right to me.
That's, go ahead.
See, when I do that?
Yeah.
I equate that to what a day equals.
Okay.
So like, her week is not, like, a day of her week is only a couple hours for a day.
Okay, so it's pro-rated, so that's
It's all pro-rated.
So you, but you would earn, for working four days in the month?
You earn like, so what it is, is like two hour, you know, her seven hours gets spread across five days for what her work week is.
Okay.
So across five weeks.
So at the end of the year, she probably earns two days at the most, or?
Well, when I pay it, I think it is like two hours, is kind of what, I don't have, I'm not doing the math in my head right now, but.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just reading it, I think, differently than what you are saying, and so.
We can rewrite that if, to make it
It's if it's just me that's got the issue, that's just the way I'm reading it.
Seven hours.
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, do we, I mean, do we want to provide some sort of clarity on this contract?
That's what I'm thinking. I just had, you know, review that wording for clarity, and then we can bring it to the board in December.
Okay.
If that's on the board, we'll proceed on this.
Well, am I reading it wrong?
Do we have, can we, can we adjust the motion to just provide that clarity right now?
The motion is really only to approve the hire. It doesn't say anything about the contract specifically.
It's to approve the hire, but it doesn't say the contract. I don't know if it needs to say the work agreement, because it doesn't say work agreement.
So what we could do is approve the hire, and then have a work agreement in December?
Yeah.
Do it that way? So we'll have that Pam's already had, she'll get that on the agenda, and next we'll have to work it.
Because normally we, we do, normally we approve the work agreement.
So we're going to just approve the hire, the work agreement, I'll be
Okay. Okay.
So the work agreement in there was supporting the hire.
Okay, thanks. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Nine point three to approve the Cook County Education Association CCEA contract.
I will make a motion to approve the Cook County Education Association contract.
Thank you. I'll second that motion.
And just to share, well, I shared earlier with the board and email, it doesn't happen all the time throughout school districts that the membership of the bargaining unit has a unanimous vote supporting their contract, and in this case, they did, so. And as Chad said, you know, thank you for the, you know, the great work done by the board members, and then for contract.
I think that throughout the process, we were interested in trying to show support for the teachers. While we were always trying to balance the impact on the budget in the future. And I, I think that was always in the forefront, how we thought about it, and how we talked about it, and I think we did that as well as we could try to be creative and find ways that did that.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it was, it was, a lot of this negotiation was kind of a little bit with playing some sort of catch-up, and it was a great balance between leveraging, you know, our fund balance, which is what the money we have to invest in having a great school. And how better do you have a great school than by employing great people, and telling them that they're great, and rewarding them for that? So I think we did that, and I think we did it in a way that we're going to be able to keep doing it in the future, so feel pretty good about that.
And I think there's some other new pieces in there around sick banks, to make that more fair, that was also negotiated. So some new pieces in the contract, I think, that were also good.
Yeah, definitely support this stuff.
And we have amazing staff, so we should support them.
Yes, we should.
Since they're quite fielded here, we really thank you for your hard work. You guys did an amazing job for our kids, so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Ten point zero administrative reports, ten point one, school report, highlight item.
Okay. This has been a very busy month, November, so you can see in our report that we've had a lot going on. Some things I want to highlight is that Woodland Sky Dancers, that was such an amazing performance, and just a great way to connect with our neighbors in Grant Portage, and here's some of the education pieces that go along with the traditions that they have. We have new student council members, we've had gratitude and being kind happening as initiatives with our elementary students. And our Veteran Day program, we had a local Theo Rex was our speaker, and he did an amazing job. He's not only a veteran, but he is also a father of two of our students here. And then again, with the Students of the Month, we've got those listed, those should be in the paper, so look for those. But our Educator of the Month was Ms. Natalie Shaw, and she has just done an amazing job in her role, supporting her teachers, supporting kids, being so organized. It is amazing, so I really appreciate her. Then the other thing is, today we met with our CCEA as an administrative team, and we just hashed out a lot of details, and it is just such a positive way of communicating with our teachers to get their input on things that we are doing as an administrative team, as a school, to make sure that we're always moving forward in the same direction, so.
Thanks, Megan.
Well, I don't know if Megan, I don't know if Megan left me anything after that. I'm supposed to have like a highlight. Just kidding. I just had one other thing I wanted to share, and it's just more informational for the board, so that if you get asked questions about how things work at school, you know, we have a truancy policy here at school where if you have three unexcused absences, you get a letter home that says your son or daughter's been absent. Minnesota State statute, if you have more than seven unexcused, seven or more unexcused absences, then, you know, we begin to have diversion meeting or some, something of that nature. I want the board to know that we've been much more consistent this year with that, and so we've worked hard on reporting absences, how are they reported? We call home, why is your son or daughter gone? Attendance is the single greatest factor that our educators have to deal with when it comes to student performance, it's the single most important thing. We currently have sixty-seven pre-truancy or truancy letters out. That's a big number, and that's K-12. I am the truancy person or contact here at school of K-12. And so I just want you to know, if somebody talks to you and says, I got this letter, that you get that warning letter after three, and then you get the diversion after seven, and it's more just of an informational piece for everybody to know, so that we can help each other out, and, you know, encourage neighbors to get their kids to school. It's the single greatest thing that we can do for our kids, and so I just want to make sure that I shared that, and so that's out and about, and I've been meeting with lots of families and trying to get everybody up to speed on the importance of being in school.
Thanks, Mitch. Okay, ten point, any questions for our principals? Thank you to you both. Ten point two superintendent report, highlight item.
Mr. Nelson with his mechanic, Greg, had another, is he year eleven now, with no points off on our inspection. Yeah, another piece that's coming down the road, met with Tina Frederickson from our co-op, and Rachel Lipti about the support framework for early ed. That's an option for our district, so we're just starting to look at that, and work with the administrative team and the early ed staff, and start looking at how we can do that to support our kids.
Great. Anything else?
Oh, I am meeting with Senator, not Senator, yeah, Representative, what is she?
Senator.
Senator?
Yeah, Senator Tina Smith.
Call her Senator when you meet her.
I will call her Senator. Meeting with Senator Tina Smith on Monday, and so I know we had a few items there, so I'll bring some items that are relevant to our school district to the table, and we'll meet with her on Monday.
Great.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, I'm just, all right, then, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor to adjourn at six oh seven PM, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. And just, and we're going to sign something, okay? Just a reminder that our next meeting is going to come a lot faster, it's December twelve, we're a week earlier than you're on hold here. So I just want to remind everybody.